Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners Public Meeting for Tuesday, September 19, 2023. The time is now 7:05. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, notice of this meeting was published in the December 8, 2022, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Kelly.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Patraco.
Here.
Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Communications, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We have won this evening. The Nutley High School Volleyball Booster Club has submitted a letter requesting permission to hold a raffle on Sunday, November 5, 2023, at 44 Park Avenue between the hours of 3:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. I need a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for communications, Mayor.
Proclaimations. Commissioner Patraco, you want to start with your proclamation?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Thank you. Whereas peace is not merely the absence of war and violence, but a condition where society achieves respectful balance and consideration towards such that there be prosperity, security, justice, and hope for all. And whereas peace is necessary for everyone to achieve health as defined by world health organizations, and whereas in the effort to promote peace and work collaboratively with other cities in New Jersey to become a state of peace, Nutley became a city of peace in 2018, and whereas the community leaders of Nutley are committed to establishing peace in our town, to promote economic opportunity, improve the quality of life for all people of our town regardless of race, religion, or nationality, and we're... ...and strengthening the ideals of peace both within among all nations and peoples. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley that Nutley be proclaimed a city of prosperity... ...to be the township Nutley Day of Peace.
Joe.
Good evening. May I?
Sure, Russ.
First, a member... ...to the commissioners and to the community for supporting this... ...for our unity sculpture which... ...our next large project is coming up.
Thank you, Reverend Fenske. We've got to move to another reverence and... ...one of our community leaders in the spiritual community, and Reverend Pam. So we're going to start the proclamation with Commissioner Evans.
Whereas Reverend Pam Bacall, Bacall? Bacall? Came to Grace Church Nutley in 1997 following her service at Grace Church in Brooklyn Heights, New York. And whereas Reverend Pam, I'm going to just go with that, earned her M.D., and it's a divinity. I was just going to ask you, is that divinity? Yes. So her masters of divinity at the General Seminary, New York City, and her undergraduate degree at Hunter College, New York, and...
Whereas during Reverend Pam's tenure at Grace Church, she worked on the Corporation for the Relief of Widows, Orphans, and Children, Union of Black Episcopalians, was a member of the Nutley clergy, and served on the Standing Committee of the Diocese of Newark, the Board of Nutley Senior Manor, past president, the Officer Aid and Reconciliation, and the Diocese of Newark Prison Ministry, where she will continue to have a role. And whereas during the Middle East War, Reverend Pam organized the Military Family and Friends Group, and during her tenure as rector, two women of the parish were called to the priesthood and one to the vocational... ...di... Help me out, Reverend Pam. Diakonate?
Diakonate.
Yeah, thank you. Whereas, and I went to Catholic school.
Whereas Reverend Pam Bacall is married to Stuart Bacall, retired photographer and trainer, and together have three adult sons, two of whom served in the armed forces, U.S. Army, and U.S. Marines. She has a yellow Labrador Retriever named Annie, who I think I met, these three cats, and enjoys training dogs in her spare time. And whereas Grace Church... I'm sorry. Where Grace Church wardens Wayne Rubin and Cheryl Pankaro shared some of their fond memories of Reverend Pam Rubin noted her love of animals and how it attracted many new parishioners to the church. As a result, Grace Church holds an annual blessing of the animals known as the Feast of St. Francis of Assis and...
And whereas Rubin, what Warden Rubin added, "We are sad to see her go, but excited for the next stage of her career in her retirement. Personally, I find her sermons very relevant and spiritually enlightening." Whereas Warden Cheryl Pankaro stated, "She has been there for my family through good times and bad with her kind words and guidance. She has even traveled to Rhode Island to perform an interment for us. Her leadership skills, along with a bit of persuasion, inspired me to become more involved in the church, first as a member of the vestry and most recently as a warden. She's an amazing mentor, role model, and friend."
Now therefore be resolved by the mayor and the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Township of Nutley recognizes Reverend Pamela Bacall as a compassionate and dedicated community leader and spiritual guide in public servant. And be further resolved that the Township of Nutley extends its sincere congratulations and appreciation to Reverend Pam for all her many accomplishments and friendships with the citizens of Nutley and proudly present her with this proclamation. Congratulations, Reverend Pam.
Set on, Frank.
Your Honor, the mayor, commissioners, set on. I'll just use Kirkwood. I hope you know how much this means to me, and I hope you know how much, oh, that you are so forget it. I love Nutley, and it's the greatest town, whatever, in America. And so I hope you all know, it is the greatest town ever. Let's give it to you. But most reason why it's a great, first of all, you know your neighbor, and my boy your neighbor knows you. And most important, your neighbor cares about you. Then there's the Nutley clergy, one of my colleagues is here, Esther Gilfense. We all work together. We meet every month. We care deeply about the spirit loudly of this town, and we care to bring God's grace and blessings here in many different ways. Now I have a message for the commissioners of the side room, and I've been doing stomachs boring. Commissioner Kelly, who's no free blue whatever senior, I don't know what they're doing up there. Commissioner Evans, there's hardly any services. You could look there, you would have nothing to do. Let's see. Commissioner Tucci, I don't know. We can have very little to do there as well. Let's see. Oh, this is my favorite. Trash collection is once every two weeks. No, once a week and recycling, once every two weeks. You are spoiled here. That's all I have to say in this town of Nutley. And Patraco, this is what I was saying, you know we have the Secretary of Defense, we're all... This is just the best town of all, again, and I really kind of thank you for the lot that you've brought around with all of you. It's a pleasure serving here. And I also told the commissioners that when I come back in a couple years, I'm running for the issue. Thank you.
Reverend Pam, we're going to take a picture.
Yeah, so that's better.
Yeah, yeah.
Twelve U. Twelve U, Commissioner. We're going to go a little out of order. I'm going to turn the agenda over to Commissioner Tucci.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, tonight is a very special night for us. We had our unity proclamation. We're honoring Reverend Pam, who's been a pillar of this community and a contributor from day one. All right. And the essence of what Nutley is, all right, is embodied, all right, in all of the folks here. And the next generation to come is sitting right in the back there. We have a group of young ladies who have achieved so much, but more importantly, in addition to their achievements and their accomplishments, they have represented us like no one has ever done before. So if I might, if you would indulge me, I'd just like to give you a little bit of history, compliments of Michelle, about what this 12-U team is about. This team started their 2023 summer season with a nine-and-two record, all right, and they became the Bye County Gold Division League Champions. They came off a tough spring season. The team started off strong with five straight wins, and their first loss was to West Corwell. Then the fight against Hanover for a first-place seed went all the way up to the last game of the season, all right, and when they faced Hanover for the first time. Unfortunately, they lost that game and ended the season with second-place seed. They knocked off West Corwell in the playoff semifinals. The playoff finals took place between Nutley, the second-place seed, and Hanover, the first-place seed, under the lights in Whippany on Wednesday, July 26. The odds were in the favor of Hanover being an older, stronger, and more experienced team, but Nutley was not willing to go down without a fight. Nutley gave up two runs to Hanover in the first inning, but with lots of discipline and patience at the plate, Nutley took the lead in the top of the fifth when Natalie Chice, the youngest player on the team, by the way, hit a triple, scoring three runs. Nutley held Hanover to three runs by playing amazing defense behind Jenna de Torres, who let up three hits and took us the distance pitching the entire game. It's important to note that most of this Nutley team has played together since they were eight U girls, all right, and they've been working hard, they've been growing, and they've been improving each and every season. Each one contributed to the success of this team, and the coaches, I mean, there's not enough that I can say about the coaches, okay? And they need to be recognized, okay? Michelle Giannone, who's in the back, Michelle, wave your hands over, I can see who you are. I know you're a little bachelor. Brian Sullivan. Brian. Marlon de Torres. Marlon. Joaquin Ortega. And David Chice. So with that leading, I offered this resolution on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners. Whereas the girls' 12-U softball team has enjoyed an outstanding season, posting an overall record of nine wins and two losses while marching their way to the Bye County Gold Division Championship. And whereas the members of the girls' 12-U softball team are Brianna King, Jada de Torres, Brynlee Sullivan, Kayden Ortega, Violet Nylan, Morgan Calicchio, Natalie Chice, Emma Rodriguez, Daniella Boyce, Liliana Giannone, and Julia Delaney. And whereas head coach, Michelle Giannone, along with assistant coaches Brian Sullivan, Marlon de Torres, Joaquin Ortega, and David Chice, worked tirelessly to train and guide these athletes. And whereas the members of the girls' 12-U softball team are the Bye County Gold Division Champions with a record of nine and two, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey join with the citizens of Nutley to honor and congratulate the members and coaches of the girls' 12-U softball team for their exceptional efforts and accomplishment. I very proudly move this resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Is now the time for comments? Well, I am incredibly impressed by your accomplishments, especially when you got that gut punch and you lost to Hanover, and then you stuck it out. You then went down two runs, three runs in the first inning, and then stuck it out, came back. That shows discipline, that shows patience, that shows calm, that shows poise. You guys have a bright future ahead of you, and I couldn't be prouder of you guys. But every time we bring a championship team in here, I always challenge them. I want to see you guys come back next year. The hard work begins now. Don't get complacent because Hanover definitely has you in their sights. Come back next year, and don't forget to thank your parents and family who supported you along the way. I vote aye.
Commissioner Evans.
I'm going to just echo the comments made by Commissioner Kelly. Nicely said, John. Nicely said. I look forward, and I'll just add, that I look forward to you guys coming back next year and reading more about your accomplishments. It's a bright future for you. Grab a hold of it and enjoy the ride. I vote aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Yes, I would just like to say that unfortunately I didn't have any girls. I have three boys, but they're older now, and they went all through the sports programs in Nutley. And I say when we get young people here all the time, look at each other, girls, because my oldest son is 28, and all the kids he played sports with, he's still best friends with, and you guys will make those bonds forever. And you also, your parents deserve a big round of applause because they're the people driving you around, your coaches going crazy, missing Sunday dinners, I'm sure, and a lot of that. So keep up the hard work. Congratulations. God bless all of you.
Vote aye.
And I guess I have to vote aye as well, yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Tucci.
Yes, girls, you had a phenomenal season. You're phenomenal Nutley citizens. Nutley High School, all right, has a lot to look forward to you and their program. Our rec program is doing exactly what it should do, all right? We've cultivated some of the best coaches around, who are committed and dedicated to you. It shows in what you've accomplished and the fine people that you have become. And the future is bright, and the rainbows are out there for you, and I know you're going to achieve every success in the world. I vote aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Girls, congratulations. Congratulations to your parents and your coaches, especially Liliana, my niece. And got to note that the head coach's real name is Scarpelli. So congratulations, girls. I vote aye. Going to hold the other one? All right, all right. We'll wait on that. So let's move on to, yeah, then we'll go in the back. Let's move on to reports. Commissioner Patraco.
Yes, I have my public safety report, Mayor. Thank you.
Bills, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Bills for September 19, 2023. Public Affairs, $85,836.45. Revenue and Finance, $2,799,458.22. Public Safety, $103,186.33. Public Works, $295,196.22. Parks and Public Property, $125,279.46. Payroll as of August 18, 2023, regular payroll total, $887,542.1. Overtime payroll, $70,237.95. Total payroll, $957,779.96, for a grand total of $4,674,544.66.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name for the record. Unless further time is granted by the board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the board.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing now, let's move on to Board of Commissioner announcement. Miss Evans?
Yes, Mayor, I have two. We had a successful tax sale. Very few properties were part of the sale. Four property tax liens and 10 water liens were part of the sale this year, so very nominally. That's business that we have to do every year by law, and we try and work very hard with everyone to make sure that they aren't put into tax sale when they have an issue to arise. The other thing that I would raise is some new information is that we were very successful in increasing our municipal bond rating. Our bond rating is now AA+, which is just one step below AAA with standard impores. Why that's important is while we as a board work very hard not to spend money that we don't have to, if we do actually have to go out and issue and offer a bond, it allows us to get a much more favorable interest rate on the bond. I expect that our net, we usually take a bond over 10 years, and that I'll be able, with this new bond rating, I'll get an interest rate that's close to 2.5%. So Mayor, just want to share those two things.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This Sunday, weather permitting, because the forecast right now is it's a little bit better than it initially was, but they're still calling for a lot of rain, we will be holding our Nutley Fall Festival at the Mudhole. The time is from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. There will be all kinds of vendors there and all kinds of crafters there. It's a great day. It's a great event. So let's all pray for a little good weather. Reverend Pam, Reverend Fenske, please do what you can, and hopefully we're going to have a great time on Sunday. Thank you.
I just, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to just thank everyone for attending our ceremony for 9/11. September 11 rolls around very quickly, and that to me, we should never forget. And why we have a crowd of people here tonight, or Nutley Police Department, please lock your doors on your cars because we're getting people into our town every night, into our community, shaking car handles, and if the cars are open, obviously they go in. If they're locked, they seem to leave those cars alone. So please lock your doors. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you. Reverend Pam kind of hit on this. We're having a flu clinic on Saturday, September 30. This is going to specialize in not only those who are more at risk, so the seniors, but also those who are neurodiverse as well. So if you need more information on that Saturday flu clinic from 10:00 to 1:00, reach out to the Health Department. We'll be happy to provide you with that more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And just to dovetail on Commissioner Tucci's announcement, the farmer's market moves into the park this Sunday so that we can take advantage of all the people who come out for the Fall Fest. So it's our pleasure to be there, and hopefully the weather cooperates with us. There's no other announcements for the commissioners. We need a short executive session on... Mr. Bruno? Contract negotiations. Contract negotiations. Madam Clerk.
I need a motion.
Move it. Second.
Thank you. Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley move into closed executive session to discuss contract negotiations. Be it further resolved at the time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when and such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley, pending and/or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exception provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
The time is 7:33.
Hopefully, we're back here in five minutes.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We are back on record. It's 8:04.
Commissioner Tucci.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is the second part of our celebration this evening. We have already honored the 12 U girls softball team. And now we will be honoring the 8U softball team. We started out, and I have just a little lead into this, we started out a little rocky. All right, with this group. And by the way, this is the first time we've had an 8U girls softball team. All right, and they lost their first five games. All right, which is never pleasant. But after losing the first five games. All right, with the outstanding coaching and guidance that they receive. And the support from the parents. These girls turned this around like nobody's business. All right, they ended up the season six and six. They won the championship. Eight U girls, if you recall, this is the same spot that the 12U girls started in. All right, and look where they wound up. They're also champions. So Michelle, whatever you're doing, please continue to do it with all your coaches. All right, and all the parents that chip in because it's working. All right, and not only are you developing outstanding softball players. You're developing outstanding young ladies. All right. I had the privilege of going to several of these games, and I have to tell you. They were thrilling, thrilling. They kept us on the edge of our seats. They were very casual about what they needed to do, but the girls knew what they needed to do. They went out on the field and they executed. All right. And this is special because Nutley, as we all know, is a family community. We have our blood family, we have our school family, we have our religious family. And we have the larger community family. All right. This evening, this is the culmination of all of our families. They say it takes a village to raise a child. Well, guess what? It took a whole township to bring these girls together. All right, and for everyone to pitch in to get to where we are today. All right, as a grandparent of one of the young ladies on this team. Like the mayor said before, he had his niece. All right, I have my granddaughter Mia on this team. All right, who was a part and no one person, all right, creates a success. It's the culmination of a group, of a team, working together. Just like what the founding fathers envisioned for this township. A community working together, a community of volunteers to make this town what it is. And while we see things changing around us, all right, Nutley is still thriving. We're still evolving, we're still moving forward, and this is just one more fine example. So having said that, Mayor, if I might, I'd like to offer this resolution. Whereas the first ever Nutley 8U softball team has enjoyed an outstanding season. Marching their way to the Great Eight Summer League Championship. And whereas the members of the girls 8U softball team are Siena Cash, Daniella Di Piazza. Annabella Gianone, Samantha Gumney, Parker Helm, Jenna McCary, Winnie McSpedon. Liam Hallick, Mia Newton, Federica Olivoe, Hannah Rodriguez. Natalia Schrody, Juliana Schrody, Lila Viola, and Cassidy Wood. And whereas, once again, head coach Michelle Gianone, who by the way, was an outstanding softball player herself. Along with assistant coaches Kelly Helm, another outstanding Nutley softball player. Lucia Viola, Chris Schrody, and Martin Viola worked tirelessly to train and guide these athletes. And whereas the members of the 8U softball team are the Great Eight Summer League Champions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey. Join with the citizens of Nutley to honor and congratulate the members and coaches of the 8U softball team for their exceptional efforts and accomplishments. I very proudly move this resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
As I said, with the 12U girls. Coming back from a demoralizing start is no small accomplishment. Starting off 0-5 and coming back to win the league is absolutely impressive. You girls should be very proud of yourself. It shows you guys have character, guts, determination. Everything you need to succeed, not only in sports, but in life, you guys have it. And like I said to the 12U girls, I challenge you guys to come back here next year. The hard work starts now. Get ready. I want to see you guys back here. And don't forget to thank your parents and your families for supporting you throughout your championship run. I vote aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Yeah, thank you. You know, we say wonderful things, but there's a couple of things I think are important. One is, as Commissioner Tucci so eloquently presented. Is we as a board are unified in our desire that Nutley continues and gets better to be a great place to live, a great place to raise a family. And with the new advancements on the Roche property, a great place to work. So with that in mind, I congratulate all of you on a job well done. And you'll hear a lot about leadership, and I commend the coaches. It's very hard to coach a team that bring them from behind and actually win the league. So that's outstanding, and it's an outstanding accomplishment. But while you're doing all of this, just remember to please have fun, enjoy it. Because these are great years to be together and enjoy those friendships. And Samantha Gumney, I've known your mommy since she was a very little girl. And Kristin, Mary-Kate sends her regards. So I vote aye.
Commissioner Patrakal.
Yes, I'd just like to keep it very short because half of you look like you're ready to go to bed already. You're falling asleep. So I'll just say congratulations. And one thing I didn't say before is when I played sports here at Nutley, a lot of the lessons aren't just about the sports that you learn on the field. It's about teamwork and how to get through life. So your coaches should be really commended and your parents. But congratulations on a rocky start and to come from behind, being an underdog is great. Congratulations.
Mayor Scarpelli. Commissioner Tucci, I'm sorry. Commissioner Tucci.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Girls, the only, the last thing I want to say is you girls are fantastic. And our Nutley girls rock. I'm so proud to be here with you. I'm so proud to be part of what you're doing, and I look forward to continuing. I again proudly vote yes.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Congratulations, girls, especially my niece Annabella. So we have both nieces. And congratulations to the coaches and the parents who do the hard work of getting them to practice to the games. Congratulations. I vote aye.
Captain.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Give a couple of minutes for them to clear out, turn it over to you, Commissioner. Got the ordinance and, uh, what up? Yeah, yeah. Bishop Patrako.
Okay, we're gonna take things out of order because I see our police department is getting tired also tonight. But before I read this resolution about our, um, MOA, I just want to thank our deputy chief Green for coming. Our PBA, um, representative, our president Gerard Tusa. And I also want to thank Gerard for a lot of patience and a lot of hard work and everything that we did together as far as the police department contract is concerned. You know, I've been up here for sixteen years now, well, are we going on our sixteen or I guess we're in our sixteen years. You know, I never, growing up in Nutley and everything is changing, you know, the sixteen years has changed so much. But I really want to commend our police department and all our officers and I want you to know. You have a board that really care about you and a town behind you, residents speak very highly of you. And, you know, I've learned what the job is. You know, the last sixteen years and it sure isn't an easy one. If it's Narcan and somebody and unfortunately with drugs, it seems like it's in every family. If it's doing CPR on a child, you know, that doesn't make it, you know? It's not just the job, it's what the men and women of the Nutley Police Department go home with as well and take through the years. So I just wanted what you all know, I'm very proud of all of you guys and I stand behind you always. And, you know, we have to be a little sympathetic to the taxpayers, you know, and, you know, we try to strike a balance up here and be fair. And I'm happy to say that through a lot of hard work through the years because this contract is way overdue, you know? Month in one night, leave this commission chamber someday, I just want to be known as somebody that's been fair to everyone. So with that being said. This is our agreement, whereas on September fifth, two thousand twenty-three memorandum agreement was reached between the township of Nutley and the police. The PBA Local thirty-three and Local thirty-three A. Whereas the township of Nutley desires to enter into a five-year contract encompassing the time period of January first, two thousand twenty-one. Through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. With the policemen's PBA Local thirty-three and Local thirty-three A, with the terms and conditions set forth in this memorandum agreement. Now therefore be, by the Board of Commissioners. Excuse me, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County, Vest, State of New Jersey. That Township of Nutley being hereby authorized in to enter into a contract with the PBA. Association Local thirty-three, Local thirty-three A, in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in the memorandum of agreement. And the Director of Public Safety is hereby authorized to execute the memorandum of agreement on behalf of the Township of Nutley in a form, in a form approved by the council or commissioners. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
I see that there's a lot of the, uh, members of the force here tonight, uh, so before I, I vote aye, I just want to say, uh, thank you for all your hard work, dedication and service to this community. You, you serve this community with honor and distinction. And, uh, there can't be enough praises sent your way, uh, es- especially keeping this community safe. When we have some nefarious actors right down the road who would more than, who come here often. But you guys definitely keep this community safe and a, a great place to live. And, uh, I, I'm proud that you guys are protecting us day in and day out, and I just want to vote aye.
Commissioner Evans.
I'll echo again John's comments and just add my own thanks for what you do every day. And, uh, I saw that in action earlier, uh, this week when, uh, my neighbors, uh. Uh, needed emergency care on a very urgent basis and everybody was there, so thank you for what you do every day. I vote aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
I voted aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Yes, I, I'd just like to thank all the members of our police department. You saw a lot of our youngsters here this evening with their families, all right? And I can speak for myself and I'm sure I can speak for all of them. Everyone sleeps well in Nutley because of the hard work that you do. And we all know that your job isn't getting any easier. But what you need to know and always remember is, no matter what happens, this Board of Commissioners will always expect you and the work that you do. I vote aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Yes, uh, you are truly Nutley's finest and, uh, you keep our town safe. And, uh, that's what's important to our people and, uh, I vote yes. I'm sure you might have moved to your, uh, ordinance introduction.
Gerard, would you like to say a few words before we move on to the ordinances? Well, come to the mic. You speak very well, well off the cuff.
Frank. Thank you.
But I would just like to, for right now, say thank you to Commissioner Patrako, Mayor Scarpelli, Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner Tucci, Commissioner Evans. And when the final vote's cast, I will be back dressed appropriately and I will respond appropriately. Thank you.
Yeah, tonight is the final vote.
Then again, I apologize for my appearance because I thought we had to wait till the end.
You look fine.
Well, thank you on behalf of myself. Thank you, Gerard.
Okay, I have a ordinance introduction. This is ordinance number three, five, two, nine, ordinance, M and N, ordinance codified in the code of Township of Nutley. Chapter one thirty-one, title Police Department, particularly Article four, entitled Special Law Enforcement. I move that this ordinance be passed with second reading and advertised in Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law. That the further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on?
October seventeenth.
October sixth, I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye, thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor, I have one resolution on for this evening. Uh, it's, uh, in honor of Hispanic Heritage, uh, Month. September fifteenth serves jointly as a starting point of Hispanic Heritage Week and in the, and the independence of Hispanic countries such as Costa Rica, El Salvador, Honduras, Guatemala, and Nicaragua. Whereas the observation of Hispanic heritage sta- started in nineteen sixty-eight as Hispanic Heritage Week. Under President Lyndon Johnson was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight to become Hispanic Heritage Month. This year's national theme, Todo Somos, Somos Uno, we are all, we are all, we are, we are all, we are one. Reinforces the diversity inherent within the Hispanic Latino population as well as the power that comes from being united, a united community. Whereas there are sixty-three point four million Hispanics in the US as of July first, twenty twenty-two. New Jersey has one million or more Hispanic residents in twenty twenty-three. Whereas it is important to celebrate and recognize the accomplishments, contributions and cultural richness, richness of the Hispanic Americans and Hispanics worldwide. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Month's presentation of Hispanic culture and heritage vastly expands the visibility and inclusion of Hispanic people on a large scale and degree. Whereas educating people on Hispanic culture and heritage helps to fortify diversity within communities and foster discussions pertaining to different cultures and ideologies. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, Vest, State of New Jersey recognizes September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-three as Hispanic Heritage Month. And encourage all Nutley residents to recognize the rich history and culture that comes with Hispanic heritage, so moved.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Evans.
Yes, just a point of clarification, uh, Commissioner Patrako, on your ordinance introduction, is it public? Yeah, I think you said the sixth, if I heard correctly, is the seventeenth, is that, would that be correct?
Aye, Lenny.
I'm sorry.
The public hearing on the ordinance thirty-five, twenty-nine, that would be October seventeenth?
Yes.
Okay, I think you said the sixth.
Okay.
Just clarifying the record.
All right, so, I, I thought you said the sixth, I'm sorry, October seventeen. October seventeenth for the record.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, I have a resolution, uh, for, uh, relating to the statute fifty-four. Colon four dash three dot thirty, uh, relating to, uh, veterans who are honorably discharged. And determined to be one hundred percent, uh, totally and permanently disabled in connection with their wartime service. Uh, they're exempt, uh, full exemption from their, uh, their dwelling, uh, in terms of paying property taxes. Whereas the following taxpayer has filed an application for allowance of full exemption with proper supporting documentation. Thus making the taxpayer eligible and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Eric Straub uh, be granted full exemption from the payment of property taxes from August twenty-one, twenty-two, August twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three. And all subsequent years thereafter, uh, for block three, zero, zero, two, lot twenty-one, known as one eighty-seven Hillside Avenue, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
I thank you for your service and sacrifice, I vote aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Uh, my next two resolutions relate to, uh, a bond, uh, offering that we will hold in, uh, early, uh, October, um, the, uh, in the amount of five million, one hundred and forty thousand dollars in general bonds, uh, for twenty twenty-three. Uh, the, uh, nature of these resolutions, uh. Basically bring forth the annual commitment for, uh, capital spending, uh, that we do each year. While we don't go out in the market every year for a bond, we're able to accumulate those capital authorizations and go into the market roughly every, uh, five years. So what, the reason why we're doing that is, is that we do have a bond expiring, uh, for five million dollars, which uh, this will replace that, so our outstanding debt will, won't go up. And with our new bond rating, I expect that we'll be able to get our, uh, interest rate on this bond uh, very close to two and a half percent over a ten-year period. So by title, uh, twelve, uh, two thousand, uh, two hundred and twelve dash twenty-three. Resolution providing for the combination of certain issues of bonds of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex. This, uh, state of New Jersey, uh, into a single issue of general bonds aggregating five million uh, one hundred and forty thousand dollars in principal amount, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
At two thousand, uh, excuse me, two hundred and thirteen, uh, dash twenty-three, resolution determining the form and other details of a five million, one hundred and forty thousand general obligation bond of twenty twenty-three for the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex. And, uh, and providing for their sale, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas Freedom Forever LLC submitted and paid for a solar panel permit at one oh six Upper Avenue in Nutley. Whereas the cost of the permit for the solar panel, uh, was collected in the amount of three hundred and fifty-seven dollars in account C zero, one, nine, oh, four, nine, oh, three, whereas the township has received a request in writing from Freedom Forever LLC for a refund of the municipal permit, given that they did not install the solar panels at the property. Whereas this permit fee is comprised of, uh, seven dollar DCA fee, which cannot be refunded. And a twenty percent plan review fee, which cannot be refunded, the remaining amount of two hundred and eighty dollars. Uh, for the municipal, uh, permit fee is refundable. Be, uh, be it therefore resolved that the town, Board of Commissioners of Township, uh, County of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey. That the municipal permit fee of two hundred and eighty dollars be refunded to Freedom Forever LLC, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Tucci.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Whereas Township of Nutley pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, colon, eleven, dash, eleven. May by resolution and without advertising for bids, purchase any goods or services under an approved county cooperative purchasing program. And whereas the Township of Nutley is a member of the Bergen Counties Purchasing Cooperative Pricing System, number eleven, dash B, small E, CCP, and whereas the Bergen County Purchasing Cooperative has awarded a contract to Athletic Fields of America, one fifty River Road, Building G, Unit four B, Montville, New Jersey. For synthetic turf maintenance, repair and replacement services via Bergen County Resolution Number nine seventy, dash, twenty-three. And whereas the Township of Nutley Department of Parks and Public Property intends to replace the artificial turf at Monsignor Owens Field. And whereas Athletic Fields of America, one fifty River Road, Building G, Unit four B, Montville, New Jersey. Has provided a quote in the amount of one million, one thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-six cents. And whereas the cost of the design permitting and construction of the improvements for Monsignor Owens Field will be supported by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Program for the entirety of the project cost. And whereas the Township of Nutley has allocated the following funds to support the project and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. From the Green Acres Grant Program Fiscal Twenty-three, we're receiving five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. And from the Green Acres Urban Parks Grant Fiscal Year Twenty-three, we are receiving five hundred thousand dollars. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey. That a contract for the re-turf of Monsignor Owens Field be awarded to Athletic Fields of America. One fifty River Road, Building G, Unit four B, Montville, New Jersey, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, eleven, dash, eleven, may by resolution and without advertising for bids. Purchase any goods or services under an approved county cooperative purchasing program. And whereas the Township of Nutley is a member of the Bergen County Purchasing Cooperative Pricing System, number eleven, dash, B, small E, CCP. And whereas the Bergen County Purchasing Cooperative has awarded a contract to Athletic Fields of America, one fifty River Road, Building G, Unit four B, Montville, New Jersey. For synthetic turf maintenance, repair and replacement services via Bergen County Resolution Number nine seventy, dash, twenty-three. And whereas the Township of Nutley Department of Parks and Public Property intends to upgrade the dog park at Reineheimer Park. And whereas Athletic Fields of America, one fifty River Road, Building G, Unit four B, Montville. Has provided a quote in the amount of eighty thousand, seven hundred, fourteen dollars and ninety-two cents. And whereas the cost of the design permitting and construction of the improvements for the dog park at Reineheimer Park will be supported by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Local Recreation Improvement Grant Program for the majority of the project cost. And whereas the Township of Nutley has allocated the following funds to support the project and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. From the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Local Recreation Improvement Grant Fiscal Year Twenty-three in the amount of seventy-two thousand dollars and from bond ordinance thirty-four, fifty-five C in the amount of eight thousand, seven hundred, fourteen dollars and ninety-two cents. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey. That a contract for upgrade to the dog park at Reineheimer Park be awarded to Athletic Fields of America, one fifty River Road, Building G, Unit four B. Montville, New Jersey, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patrako.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas raffle applica- applications have been received from the following organizations. Good Shepherd Academy, license number fifty-seven, dash, twenty-three, calendar raffle. Held on various dates, December, January, and February. Nutley Irish American Alliance, license number fifty-eight, dash, twenty-three, off-premises fifty-fifty cash raffle. Beheld Friday, December eighth, twenty twenty-three. NHS Volleyball Booster Club, license number fifty-nine, twenty-three, on-premises fifty-fifty cash raffle. Be held Friday, October sixth, twenty twenty-three. NHS Volleyball Booster Club, license number sixty, dash, twenty-three, off-premises merchandise raffle. License number sixty-one, twenty-three, on-premises merchandise raffle. And license number sixty-two, twenty-three, on-premises fifty-fifty cash raffle to be held Sunday, November fifth, twenty twenty-three. Brad Clift School PTO, license number sixty-three, twenty-three, on-premises fifty-fifty cash raffle. Be held Saturday, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Whereas the application's been reviewed and approved approved by the municipal clerk and the police department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that the aforementioned licenses are hereby approved and municipal clerk is authorized to issue said license, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
Whereas the Township of Nutley advertised proposals for the marketing recycling materials on June fourth, twenty twenty. Whereas the requests for proposals for the marketing recycling materials were accepted by the Township Clerk on June twenty-four, twenty twenty. Whereas the Township of Nutley reviewed and analyzed all submitted proposals. And whereas proposals received from Integrity Integrity Recycling Waste Solutions, one eleven Route thirty-one Bloomington, New Jersey was the most favorable proposal for the Township of Nutley. Whereas Integrity Recycling Waste Solutions was recommended for a three-year contract award with two one-year options for contract extension effective on October first, twenty twenty. Whereas the Township has selected to exercise the option to extend contract for one year and the term of the contract will be effective October first, twenty twenty-three through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four with an additional one-year extension remaining. And whereas funds are available from account number three oh one four twenty-three two oh one, account four oh one four twenty-three two oh nine in the amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars and have been certified, the Chief Financial Officer said certification be attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey. The contact contract extension number one is here uh hereby authorized and approved, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi. This resolution is to uh uh authorize a planning board to look at certain properties surrounding the Chickolini property to see if they uh qualify as an area in need redevelopment. I'll move it by title. Uh Resolution Number two seventeen twenty-three Resolution of the Board of Commissioners authorizing the planning board of the Township of Nutley to conduct a preliminary investigation of certain property, then the township for potential redevelopment, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Patraco.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name for the record. Unless further time is granted by the board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks of the board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the board.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Carmine Alessio eighty-one East Center Street. Continuance of September fifth, twenty twenty-three, the last. I went to the Essex County Court for a tax appeal. And we had the hearing there. Can I ask you point blank, uh Mr. Mayor Scarpelli, are you gonna do anything about the damaged vehicles? And the enforcement of the one-hour parking ordinance on East Center Street? The oil all over the street? Lot grand shoulders, fighters. I need those. Better. And truck rental project forty at seventy-five East Center Street. Um I I I need an answer um along with, you know, straightening out the zoning violations. Because hearing at the tax court. Um and I like to have the video here. So I can present it, you know, to them, to the court. Again, you think you 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 may respond to my question?
Still, I say, well, I'm gonna take a look at the the oil that you say is on the street and see what we could do about getting that up. Where is that and who's causing it?
Um. This is an ongoing thing that the body shop is parking their damaged vehicles all over the street. And there's a towing company, you know, and plus there's uh patrons that go in the park. So I can't actually accuse who's doing it, but it's it's pretty. If you had to like identify the damaged cars, maybe a lot of the oil's coming from that along with the construction company up the street that the other day I've seen them actually bring a forty-yard container, put it in front of their building and have a towing vehicle with another extra-large yellow container obstructing the traffic there and switching the filled container with the empty container. And it's my assumption that, and I've seen it once, because I do work um in front of seventy-five East Center Street um to where I made a report with the Nutley Police that there's like a hundred yards of hundred yards of like tire marks going down the hill. And they concluded that it was a garbage container of some sort. So, you know, I'm I I just wanna know if 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 anything is gonna come up.
Time. Just just one more question for me, Mr. Alessio. Uh the container, is it being put on the street or it's on their their property?
The I do have a picture on my uh, you know, flip phone that the
I I mean, I understand what's changing now, but
actually on the street, on the street last uh the beginning or or last, the middle of last week, on the street. And the the vehicle was behind it going like east. And there was a container on that vehicle. So this is this is what what's going on down there. And besides the fact that there's apartments there now and there's young children and strollers, which I could take an oath to say, when I saw that coming down the hill uh 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 I guess you would say a father and a mother with a little 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 child in a stroller was trying to get up the hill. And they they went around it, but it's a detriment to the area there. And I've been pointing this out for quite some time now.
We'll we'll take a look at the the container situation to make sure that it's on their property.
I I would appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Evans?
We've had uh the code department has been down there multiple times. They've uh issued violations. Uh so and they'll continue to do that. I have an inspector that drives down East Center Street daily uh to see what what's going on down there. So.
About seventy-five years. Not too long ago, sixteen thousand more. They were supposed to be removed from that property and now one of those are along with the apartment discussed this the last time. So this is telling that this is telling the latter head, Joe Ted is saying that the owners do damn everything and come out from a property. It's in its space. Along with Lyonski, very, very big spider at one morning. We were federal ads there. The apartments. Damage the passenger side of the whole I see. Right here. And this is part of the in the back with the I don't feel my next three is not towards along with
Again, the seventy-five East
That was a side plan.
Remediation.
So Alessio, can you wrap it up?
Yes.
Thank you.
Which is possibly removed, that's the black line. Teacher appears from your department. That issue is
This is
The latter guys from the it's contained, it's contained never ends. Never ends. All of the people in the wall field, they used the Y. Hey, I I remember the but the lot steps that just caused the line of Y after this, but what what is it? To me, it appears that we're getting set up or defund proven. So all the residents will move out and if they get back to initial like master plan. That was initially here. The expert plan wanted suggested that where the apartments were, that that would be before and that East Center Street would be entrances.
Mr. Alessio, thank you. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Joan Rubino, one twenty-seven Franklin Ave.
This is Rubino, they're from the Chickolini property going south through Belalucha.
Chanel was already being discussed for redevelopment.
They were they were in a uh the last, they were in an area of rehabilitation. We're looking to see if they qualify as an area in need to redevelop.
Thanks.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners?
Hi, my name is Paul DeLuca. I live at Forty Washington Ave. I was here about a month ago complaining about the property down on Nicole Place and uh Agri and Hancock's, these guys came down, you did a great job. But what happens after this? I mean, the weeds are all grown back. The storm sewers are all clogged. Clogged. No, no water goes down there.
Not as of Monday.
Huh?
Not as of Monday.
Not as of Monday?
Monday.
Oh, you. Why?
Because they were clean.
They cleaned the top. What about what's underneath? There's one storm drain got this much space and the rest is garbage. They gotta be spooked out the right way. And then you got this company that come in to do Washington Ave. They put uh orange plastic things by the storm drains. When the leaves, when the leaves fall, they get clogged and Washington Ave's fine.
We can't do anything about that, Mr. DeLuca, because that's construction that's gonna be ongoing on Washington Avenue. That's what those orange containers are, is to keep debris from going in there.
Yeah.
And it, you know, it's a state highway there.
They were there for a month. They're not doing nothing yet. So in the meantime, they get clogged and the water backs up. My street, I think it's a river, a river. The water all comes downhill place. There's two sewers across by trunks, they're clogged. And it comes right down Washington Ave. I don't get it.
Okay, we'll take a look at those.
You want these pictures? Because the pictures don't lie. I mean, I told, I went, I seen one of your guys. Same show all the time. I said, what happened to the beneath there? You know what that was, right? I'm trying to keep it clean and neat down there and I'm not getting no help from you guys, none whatsoever.
Still, look, that's that's I I that's a little unfair because you just said that when you came here a month ago, we came down and did
Yeah.
Did things.
That was a month, a month or two ago, but the weeds are all grown back. The fire, the fire hanging down the street, you can't see it no more.
You just said we didn't do anything, so we did.
I said you did a good job.
Right.
Proves back.
Absolutely. We uh we understand that.
Okay, I call, call to now every three weeks to get the grass cut on Washington Ave. Okay, two days ago, it was a minute, it's growing up.
Where's this?
Frank, you know, Frankville, away.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Call for care. I put out a call, I said, Carl, we have a problem down there. I try to keep the area clean. Okay?
And we appreciate you you, you know, calls.
Carl, he comes two days later, it's clean. And then he's got two garbage cans down at the bus stop. It seems like nobody wants to pick them up. I called the health department the other day. The girl was talking to an hour of garbage. Well, if you're on a lot of property, when you go out, find a lot of stuff, you know.
That I don't know. I don't I'm not familiar with garbage cans.
I felt west. It's only oh my before, so many old Ds on the bus stop with big tree. Nothing goes, not up. But obviously that part of Washington Ave, nothing, no trouble.
I mean, you guys can't pick up two garbage bins once a week, right yet? We don't understand, frankly, there are a few garbage cans we empty every day. That part of that is it's like not part of nothing.
Another thing.
We got cats.
Rats. Foxes, turkeys, and pigeons. Nine nine
Uh, no, that's what we got down there. There's five hundred pigeons in the backyard.
Five hundred pigeons.
I'll I'll have the the health inspector go out tomorrow.
I mean, it's bad down there. It's an animal sanctuary back there. And Mr. Mr. What's with Mr. Blue Ribbon doesn't clean up his spot, clean up the area. I had to call Carl. Going this high. I mean, I shouldn't have to do that. It's not really not my job to do it.
Yeah, you you shouldn't and and that that's all I have.
Trying to keep the area clean. I've been in Nutley sixty my kids want to, I want to love Nutley.
No, like like as the mayor said, we appreciate you coming here and bringing this to our attention. I'll have the health inspector go out tomorrow to investigate.
Okay, and then on another hand, Mr. Tucci, I talked to the tree guy today. There's five different problems on that tree, five different problems. Number one, it's eight inches in the street. Okay, you got a branch growing at the side of the tree, maybe my height of my head. Okay, the tree's growing and the the wires are going like this. All right? The branches are
The branch fell and it's put that car. I was supposed to be insurance company.
Right. They're gonna pay, they might not pay, they said. I had the the guy, the tree guy out there. He said every time they come to trim that trim that tree, they trimmed
that side. They never trimmed the other side. And that's where the branch fell in my car.
Mr. DeLuca, I I haven't received that report yet. Uh but if there's something else that we need to do like like you asked us to clean up the railroad property and we did, we did the best we could. And we'll we'll contact, we'll contact Norfolk Southern to see if we can get them to do it. But in the meantime, if we need to continue to cut what what we can on our property, we will. And once I get the report on the tree, um we'll 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 do what we need to do.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm, yes.
You guys, there's electric, they go through the tree. They go down the park, it's not the wrong path. I got a phone from the surface, one of the surface. They're probably
Branches grown through a tree?
He said absolutely.
He said absolutely. What's the address?
Right out. So the wire is growing.
Wire is in the tree.
Through the tree.
Your guy told me that nothing wrong with that.
The guy across the street, when it when it's windy, his lights flicker. Come on, man.
Well, that that's not something that we could do anyway, but we can contact public service, all right, to get somebody out here to make sure they take care of it.
Today, they're coming out to see her claw.
Okay, that's great.
Broke right through the tree. I can't say how you can say that.
I don't know who you spoke with. I don't know who said that, but that
Is it?
John John Linson?
Yeah. They came on that.
He said that's okay.
He said that's okay.
That's that's a little surprising to me too. But I'll, when I get the
I told him, I just brought him over and showed him where the tree. It's even safe.
Yeah.
And now it's if me if I'm gonna get paid for my car.
It's only thirty-seven thousand dollars a day, that's my car. These guys came and trimmed the one side of the tree.
Right.
Never trimmed the other.
So he's gonna come back?
Except the whole floor of that tree on the left side.
Gotta come out, because it's
Going out here. And it's what?
Well, we're out there talking to them, a branch fell and hit another car. I mean, I don't know what's so great about this tree.
It's funny you know, we're trying to get the tree down there. You guys will never come back here.
I bet you if it was in front of one of your houses, it would be down already. Oh, yeah, nasty. I'm a, you told me last time I'm a nice guy.